All right, I'd like to call this meeting of the Town Council for June 24th to order. If you would please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Excuse me. For those of you who may have not gotten a chance, the Hot Dogs for Alzheimer's event today went over very well. And was a great day. It was a beautiful day out there, so. I hope you had a chance to go by, but if you didn't, then just know that you missed a good opportunity. Where am I? Announcements. Sorry. Oh, I don't want to forget this one. I would like to ask you to join me in a moment of silence for John Jack Malcolm, who passed away on Tuesday, June 22nd. Jack was a member of the trustee of the trust funds for many years and will be missed by our community, so if you'll just join me for a minute. Thank you. Jack was a good friend of ours. He was a past member of the House of Representatives. He's been an active member of the community for a long time and a longtime member of the trustee of the trust fund, so. We'll miss him. Sorry to hear that, and our condolences extended to his family. I met his sister at the last election and he was just a great guy. He was very friendly and helpful, so. Sorry to hear about it. Upcoming Town Council meetings, there's a meeting on July 15th, Thursday, July 15th, 7 o'clock, a regular meeting, and Thursday, August 19th, at 7 o'clock, again, a regular meeting here in the council chambers. Paul, did you have anything?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Just want to say it feels weird being back here now. That's it. I have three announcements. They all pertain to the Fourth of July, so bear with me, please. We're less than two weeks away to the Towns Merrimack Fourth of July Celebration. On Friday, July 2nd, the Merrimack Concerts Association will be holding their annual holiday patriotic concert at Abbey Griffin Park from 7:00 to 8:30 PM. Please note that the concert is on Friday, July 2nd, not Saturday, July 3rd, due to a conflict with the Merrimack Concert Association. Once again, the concert will be held on Friday, July 2nd. The Fourth of July Parade will take place on Sunday, July 4th, and will begin, as always, at 1:00 PM. The 2021 is a special year for the Town of Merrimack since we're celebrating our 275th birthday, and we are hoping to make this year's parade extra special. Registration is now open to enter or float into the parade. We are currently looking at volunteers to assist with the parade setup and actually in the parade itself. The 275th Committee is looking for the council. I know a couple of you spoke to me already. If you're in town and would like to help out the 275th Committee, please contact me, our councilors. If there's people in the public that want to help out with the 275th, you can contact Matt at Merrimack Parks and Rec. The annual fireworks display will take place on Sunday, July 4th, at 9:00 PM at Merrimack High School. DJ Darren Roy will be providing pre-firework music from 7:30 to 9:00 PM at the high school. There will not be any food trucks available for the fireworks, including ice cream vendors. Please contact Parks and Recreation at 603-882-1046 if you have any questions. Thank you.
Comments from the press and public? Anybody that wants to comment to the council about upcoming ideas or agendas? Seeing none, we'll move on. We don't have any recognitions, resignations, or retirements, or appointments, or public hearings. Which brings us to legislative updates from state reps. We did get a quick note from Maureen Mooney. I don't see any other state reps here. She was writing from the House session at the Bedford Sportsplex. She wanted us to know that House Bill 1 and 2, the state budget, passed through the House today. So they're both headed to the governor's desk for signature. And she refers to a letter from Senator Daniels for her update for today, outlining budget items, and that letter is two pages long. If you'd like, I can read it in, or we can just include it with the minutes. I'll hit the highlights. It's fiscally responsible. It's tax reductions for all New Hampshire residents, property tax relief, money back to the municipalities, safe streets, improvement or increases in aid for education. And additional highlights include removal of the exit tent tolls on the Everett Turnpike, effective January 1, 2022, and adequate education grants of 16 million, and meals and rooms revenue sharings in 21 of 1.3 million going up in '22 and '23. He explains that the budget is good for Merrimack businesses and taxpayers alike. And so we'll include that with the minutes. I think you all got the letter, anyway. So, Town Manager's Report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Day Camp is open and operational. This is the first week of Day Camp. Things are progressing, trying to get back in the swing of things, as many of you know that the Day Camp, we didn't hold Day Camp last year. So it's like starting afresh. We've got a lot of new faces down there, but they're doing quite well. The pre-construction meeting for Phase 3 wastewater upgrade was held yesterday. Our contractor, Methuen Construction, has been given the notice to proceed effective on July 5th. The project will be substantially complete by July 5, 2023, and fully complete by September 3, 2023. Once we get the federal money infrastructure that was voted on back in March, once we get our final number of what Merrimack will be getting for that, I believe we'll be coming back asking for some of that money to help offset some of the additional costs, particularly the screenings building with some of that money. Quick highlight of that federal money, which was March, that was signed into law by President Biden at the time. Basically, they're looking for shovel-ready projects for water and sewer. And there's a list of three or four other things, but they want shovel-ready projects because they want them completed as soon as possible by 2024, which will definitely be in the realm here with our project that we started. The Merrimack Highway Crew completed the first mowing of the solid waste landfills today. The mowing is required at least twice a year to protect and maintain the liner of the closed landfill, and that is a requirement of New Hampshire DES, that we mow the hill. Anybody who's ever been to the transportation hill behind. And the reason why we have to mow the hill is because they don't want tree roots penetrating the liner. So they feel if we keep it mowed, the trees won't have a chance to grow and penetrate the liner. Public Works Division would like to hi- like to hire, like to welcome Michael Harris to the team. Michael will be working as the new stormwater foreman. He comes with significant amount of experience from a neighboring community, so we're looking forward to having his expertise in helping us with the MS4 that Dawn and Kevin will be talking about in a little bit. Last update is FL Merrill is constructing a drainage improvement for the town on Dairy Street and Joppa Road. This project is expected to take place and take two weeks, less than two weeks, to complete, and will address a serious drainage issue along Joppa Road and the Dairy Street area. That is all I have.
That's the same group that's working the roundabout, right?
That is correct.
The drainage for that.
Yes, so they moved out of the roundabout and down Joppa Road to compete that. The reason being is that we're looking to pave, so we want that drainage to be done so we can pave that portion of Joppa Road. So get them in, get the pavers in, and then they'll move back to the roundabout.
Are there any questions of the Town Manager on his report? Getting off easy again. There's no consent agenda tonight, and we have no old business tonight, which brings us into new business, which is sort of old business, but we have committee appointments. Every year, we have to re-establish, refill, maintain the membership of all our various different committees, plus we have new people that have stepped up. And so we have a list of names of people that are, that were prepared to move forward with appointments to the committees. We did interview Eric Starr and Phil P., Eric Starr for Conservation Commission for a renewal, Phil P. for Parks and Rec Committee, Neil Anketell to re-up for the planning board, and Ben Niles to re-up for zoning board, and Rod Buckley. And in our interviews, we were happy with their answers, their discussions of what they think we should be doing and stuff like that. So we were going to recommend a reappointment or appointment for those guys. I guess Phil is a new appointment as an alternate. I believe all of their names are on here. Yeah, okay. And then there are other people for the Ag Commission and Heritage Commission and Parks and Rec that were asking to re-up that we haven't interviewed, but we had no reason to believe that they shouldn't be accepted for another term. So if somebody would like to make a motion, we can move forward with appointments. Nancy?
Could we do this en masse, as we've done before?
I think we can, yes.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to approve all the appointments to the various committees and boards as presented.
In the agenda?
In the agenda, thank you.
Okay, which would be Best Hardin Parks for Ag Committee, Eric Starr for Conservation, Chip Pollard for Heritage, Michelle Creswell for Parks and Rec, Julie Poole for Parks and Rec, Phil P., I'm not even going to try his last name, I apologize, for Parks and Rec Committee as an alternate. Neil Anketell for Planning Board, and Rod Buckley and Ben Niles for Zoning Board.
Presz Buzuski.
Presz Buzuski.
Presz Buzuski.
Okay, for the record.
Second by Barbara.
Seconded by Barbara, so motion by Nancy, seconded by Barbara. Is there any discussion or thoughts on these appointments?
Really, the only thing is to thank them very much. You know, I was delighted to see the number, which is great, because we've been talking about needing volunteers, and obviously
Well, most of these are re-upping, but even still.
But some, the ones that are particular, and they're staying, which is just as important. So thank you very much.
Yep, okay. So we'll call for a vote. All those in favor have signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining? So Ben, I see you're here. You ready to be sworn in?
Too late, we've already voted yet.
Let me see if I can find his.
You're going to go right over here, Ben?
I'll meet you over there at the mic. Just a second. See if I have a sheet here. That one with the. Because he needs to get his other stuff. So that's what I'm saying.
Same as yours, but we have to sign as an approval.
For you to read this part for us, please.
I, Ben Niles, do solemnly swear and sincerely swear that I will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all the duties incumbent on me as a full member of the zoning board of adjustment, according to the best of my abilities, agreeable to the rules and regulations of this constitution and laws of the state of New Hampshire, so help me God.
Excellent. So thank you very much, we appreciate it.
Do you want us to sign?
Yeah.
Sure.
Put it down, sign it. Nancy? You've got those already. We have a whole bunch more committee assignments that are going to need to be signed so that they can be sworn in when they stop by at the Town Clerk's office. So we can pass it over to us. So I'll send those down that way. Sorry, you can do the rest of this. It'll get around.
We'll make sure we get it back.
We can either take 20 minutes and do it now, or we can try and get done. I don't know what that is. I don't know why we have these here. Where am I now? Okay. Number two. While we're doing that, and not trying to miss anything, thanks again to all the people that have signed up and re-upped for their committee positions. Item number two is the MS4 update. Provide the Town Council with the yearly update on the MS4 program. Submitted by Dawn Twamala and Kevin Anderson. Program has made progress in meeting the EPA requirements with the addition of our new environmental coordinator. As a requirement of the permit, we need to have a public review as part of the process. So welcome, Dawn and Kevin.
So for those that do not know. Geez, Kevin. Making a first impression there. Kevin is the environmental engineer that the Town Council provided the positioning in the 2021 budget. He's been hard at work with the program alongside Dawn and the interns, have been going very diligently in working in this program, so. With that, Kevin, if you just want to raise your hand so people at home can see you.
Kevin, you look familiar. Have you been working with the community, with the town in another position?
I've been in front of numerous boards in this community through my previous job at Meridian Land Services.
Ah, okay.
So I look very familiar.
All right, great, thanks. Well, welcome to Merrimack.
Thank you very much.
Glad to have you.
He comes to us with over 20 years of experience, and he's a licensed professional engineer for the state of New Hampshire.
Well, I know about probably 10 of them, because I've seen you at the planning board, but. Good, so you're going to give us a presentation? It's all yours.
Well, I was waiting for Dawn to give me an introduction, but I'm just going to jump into this. I'm here in front of this commission, not commission, this Town Council to update. With the MS4 status, this is a requirement for the MS4 permit. I'm going to touch base on six items. The communities affected, the stormwater coalitions that we're part of, the first year program and how it was set up, minimum control measures, the EPA audit that we went through last year, and then I'll just kind of give a brief status of what's currently going on. So the EPA is the one that determines whether you are in the MS4 region or not. And this is based on urban area, which is a result of a population calculation. In New Hampshire, there are 66 regulated communities. 16 of them have been waived for various reasons, and three of them are considered non-traditional, be like U and H, something like that. The communities that are waived, I mean, not too many of these are very close to us, but I just thought I'd present a list of the ones that did secure waivers. You'll notice that the regulated communities in New Hampshire are located down in the southeast section of the state, obviously due to population. When we blow this area up, you'll see that there's a green mass and then a orange area. The orange area is the Seacoast Coalition. The green is the New Hampshire Merrimack Valley, our Lower Merrimack Valley Commission, and that's the one that we're part of, the coalition. The Stormwater Coalition, 15 communities in the seacoast, 18 communities, my slide is not changing, there it goes, and Lower Merrimack Valley. DES, New Hampshire's Department of Environmental Services, provides assistance. They coordinate meetings, they take meeting minutes, they update and keep a blog for us, and they, by and large, keep track of templates that we use throughout all of the communities. And at this point, I'd like to make a note that if you guys have any questions, please feel free to interrupt me if you need a clarification on anything.
Okay, thanks.
Yep. 18 communities, all of them you're familiar with. Laconia kind of stands out there as the oddball.
Yeah, they've come down and joined us for our coalition group, even though they're not required and they're not pulled in. They understand that in the future that they might very well be. I've also been talking a lot with the Hanover Lebanon, I talk to them quite frequently. So there are others that are interested to make sure that they can get their communities up and running.
Is this a coalition that we've created as a community, or is this something the EPA put together and said, you guys are a group?
We did, as New Hampshire. The communities came together. It was originally the Manchester and then the Nashua, there were two separate ones. We've come together as one for this new permit. The original permit under 2013 had created the two different coalitions. There were actually many different coalitions at the time, and what we're doing is coming together, so there's now two main coalition groups. And we even work together quite often to create these templates and to make, you know, less work for all of us and to use something as a guideline, so we're all being fairly consistent for all of our EPA requirements.
Okay, thank you.
And just to kind of expand on that a little bit, the coalition, it's this source where we're all able to communicate with one another, bounce ideas off one another, share templates, which is very important, and actually assists everyone a lot. And then we also create templates that some of these other communities use. So I mean, it's a give and take, and it's a great, great coalition.
There aren't very many meetings that even through all the COVID, we had 36 attendees for every one of our meetings or more.
So it's an important issue. I mean, nobody's skipping out there. Everybody's paying attention. Good.
During the first year, we were busy creating all of these documents. These documents that we're talking about are living documents. They're constantly changing. We're prioritizing, reprioritizing, testing, that's what we talk about when we talk about these living documents. These were all in an effort to meet the EPA schedule. Each year, they ask that you basically add some more to your program and add additional to your program, and create what we call MCMs, which are Minimum Control Measures. There are six MCMs as part of the program. Public education, public involvement, illicit discharge, construction, I mean, yeah, construction stormwater, post-construction, and then housekeeping. And I'm going to go into a little bit of detail on each of these. MCM1, which was the public education, we're really targeting four audiences, residential, commercial, developers, and industrial. And we're really trying to educate them and make them aware about what stormwater is and what actually attributes to some stormwater conditions, impairments, and pollutants, really. We do this through advertisements. This is done through pamphlets that are handed out. Just try to get as much information to these groups as possible. Public involvement, I think, is a very important one. We're trying to educate, but also encourage the public to comment on this. We really want to get feedback from the public and educate them at the same time. We're looking for participation. In past years, there's been Public Works Open Houses. There's the Touch a Truck, there's school celebrations, of which I was not part of any of these, so these are the list from last year.
A first-grade trip, huh?
This is the big one, and I believe this was probably the primary reason as my position was brought in. Illicit discharge detection and elimination program. This is the one that needs the most work here in the Town of Merrimack. It's going to involve writing or rewriting town code, which I'll be before all of you again, and modifying Chapter 167, which is the stormwater regulations. I'm looking for authority to investigate and to enforce. We all know New Hampshire, it's not a home rule state. We can only do what we are allowed to do, and this is a very gray area. It's going to take quite a bit of conversations and discussions. Who gets the authority? Who can go on someone's property to inspect? What are we looking for? This is touchy for a lot of people in New Hampshire. Very, very much familiar with all of the state RSAs that involved in this. I've got binders of information, just trying to research this, so it's pretty well, pretty in-depth. And again, we're trying to eliminate, but also document, all of the illicit discharges that occur, and they do occur here in Merrimack. MCM3 continues, and this is where we're trying to collect data. Outfalls, or the outlet of all of our stormwater networks, are prioritized. High priority to low priority. We prioritize based on their proximity to the major water bodies, the rivers, the brooks, and lakes. We have dry weather sampling, which we're underway with right now. I have the interns working on that. So when it hasn't rained for 48 hours, there are 12 outfalls in town that are still flowing. We test them for nitrogen, phosphate, E. coli, there's another handful of items that we're testing them for.
Do we do that testing here in Merrimack?
We collect the information. Some of the tests, we have to outsource to ChemServe, and there are fees involved with that. We're also borrowing some equipment from wastewater. There's some expensive meters that we need to kind of coordinate the use of. But majority of the testing, we can do with some smaller sampling and test type strips.
Okay, thank you.
Wet weather. We have not started the wet weather sampling program, and that was to be implemented this past year. There are 88 priority outfalls that we are keeping track of, and there are probably 100-plus more outside of that. Ideally, we were looking to be sampling all of them at some point in the course of a year. It's a little bit unrealistic. We're going with priority, and I'm really trying to solidify where we have been, where we are now, and moving forward. I want to make sure I've got a program and a schedule moving forward.
Go ahead, Barbara.
Just a question for you, especially for the folks at home. What is an outfall?
Excellent question. An outfall, it's the outlet pipe that the stormwater releases its water into the adjacent water body.
So it'd be like a pipe that is draining into, say, Babusick Brook?
Correct, yes. When we gather all of this data, we are constantly, again, reranking all of our outfalls to reprioritize them based on our results. Catch basin delineation, there's over 5,000 catch basins here in town. The best way to explain it is every drop of water needs to be accounted for, and I need to know where it goes and how it gets there. This is going to take a substantial amount of time to determine, to delineate these areas that flow to the catch basins. Again, I'm doing this through a priority basis. The larger, high priority sites, I'm working on first, and the lower priority are obviously last on my list. MCM4 is construction site stormwater runoff. Construction sites, we have disturbed non-established areas. Erosion control is a huge thing. We're constantly on top of contractors asking them to re-establish their erosion control. We, the town, do inspections on sites. There's third parties that do inspections on these construction sites. The results of these are sent to us and documented. We don't really have a lot of enforcement control. Community development does have enforcement control, but by and large, it's a lot of reminding, put your silt fences up, fix this, we are watching you, kind of thing. MCM5 is post-construction. Post-construction deals with maintenance. All of these private subdivisions or private site plans have private stormwater management controls that need maintenance. They are required through our Chapter 167 to maintain them and send us their records on a yearly basis. This has been more established in the recent years, and we are actively seeking this information from them and collecting them in a database. MCM6, good housekeeping. This is kind of like the towns' checks. We're looking for town-owned properties, parks, open space, town facilities like the highway garage. We're monitoring equipment and vehicles. What we're trying to do here is to make sure we know where the stormwater is that's falling on town property, and that's properly being managed. What we're trying to do here is to make sure we know where the stormwater is that's falling on town property, and that's properly being managed. MCM six also expands into operations and maintenance, street sweeping, catch basin cleaning, salt use on the roads. There's stormwater prevention pollution plans that we have established. This is just, again, making sure we're taking care of our town and making sure that it's not going into the stormwater. The audit, EPA audited Merrimack last year. Third-party PG Environmental ran the audit. It was primarily done through Zoom, questions and responses. I think there was several iterations that Dawn had to go through and provide them additional information. They issued a final report. In short, Merrimack is doing well, there are some shortfalls that we need to address. Get caught up a little bit on the IDDE and document. We really need to document everything we're doing a little bit better. So we've made notes about that. We've taken into account their recommendations, authority and enforcement of the illicit discharges. But in the end, there was no formal notice of a violation. So, I mean, that's good, that was a good reminder that we need to make sure we're doing better documentation. And lastly, to close this out, and this is for the public. All of our information is available online. There's annual reports that we're required to submit. The closes, the information we're gathering closes June thirtieth for the previous entire year. And I'm going to be tasked with putting together the next report, that's due September thirtieth. There's a notice of intent, which basically describes all of the actions we plan on doing in the years that we plan on implementing them. And then there's the stormwater management plan, which details what we're doing, what each of these years entail, and how we're implementing it. So if anyone has any questions, I'm sure I'd be happy to answer them.
Nancy? So do you have a, is this report going up on the website somewhere so that people can find those links and stuff like that?
This is, yes, it is, it is available on the website now. Just kind of a reminder here, I will make sure that these are updated and current, which I believe they are. The one that's noted as the EPA that shows our annual report, I'll make sure that one gets onto the stormwater link under Public Works.
Yeah, they're all under Public Works, under Stormwater, there's a separate section just for Stormwater. So they're all, everything's listed under there.
Great.
So as you can see, why we need another full-time person.
Oh, I can imagine, I was thinking we needed three or four more, the way we, the way some of these were listed, five thousand catch basins and all that kind of stuff.
Exactly.
To try and get those on even a decade cycle would be difficult. Does anybody have any other questions or thoughts? Lon?
Yeah, I'd just like to commend Dawn and Kevin.
Kevin.
Kevin, thank you. You could read, or at least this counselor could read, when Dawn was here, two and three, or, and especially last year, coming up through this, of the workload and the detail. And kudos to having handled it that well. And you continue giving those kinds of concise reports, I'm really going to be enthused.
Thank you.
Okay, Barbara?
Yeah, what exactly is a illicit discharge? What constitutes that? And how do you find it?
Excellent question, again. So each of our water bodies here in town have listed impairments, high phosphorus, high nitrogen, E coli. One of them actually is aluminum. We're looking for the sources that cause these. That would be an illicit discharge. If we're starting to get really, really high readings on any of those that we're trying to monitor, that would be considered illicit. And when I talked about locating and delineating each of these catch basins, we need to know where every drop of water goes. So if I sample an outfall and I get a large reading on something, I can backwards-track that network to a probable cause. And this is where we need to get authority to investigate and authority to implement and enforcement. Who's going to knock on the door? Are we allowed to knock on the door? Can we investigate this property? And those are things I want to make sure we do correctly, by the book, because you're talking about someone's private property here.
Right. And is there a standardized list of illicit discharges?
No, but you, it can be as simple as somebody dumping a paint can down a storm drain. Something as simple as that. If you see it, then say something, because it's not supposed to be there. Same thing with putting your, you know, your bag of dog poop as you're walking and throwing it down there, that's an illicit discharge. Any, it can be anything.
Dawn, you actually just reminded me, this is a great point, training, training of individuals. There's training amongst Public Works, highway, highway crews. We're trying to train everybody to look and see what they're looking at and to just let us know and do it, inform us. So training is part of this, too.
Finley? Thanks. I was wondering, out of the five thousand catch basins we have, do we, do we have mapped every single one now? Or do we still had a loss for a few of them?
The short answer is no, we don't have them all. A lot of them are approximate. But we then have, you know, created this priority list, and we're focusing on exactly locating them. In the past few weeks, I've implemented a program where we are opening these structures, checking the pipes, measuring the pipes inside of them and inverts, so that I can backwards-track and create a network. No, not all of them are located. We're working on that, and we're going to do it in a prioritized way.
Most of them have been located physically on the ground. They might not be accurate, they might be within ten, twenty feet, so we're trying to narrow that down. But what hasn't been done a lot is to pull the catch basins and to find where those pipes go. And that's what we need to know.
So it's a small percent, I presume? Small percent of them that are in that situation where we're not exactly sure where they travel?
Yes, small percentage that we're not sure of, yes.
Great, thank you. Sir, are there other questions?
Thank you. Thank you. I just had a question, would the town employees, would it be the DPW that would be looking into the illicit discharge detection? Or would DES be involved in that as well?
My cursory review through RSAs would try to utilize what's already been established. Health inspectors, DES, to do the enforcement. They're the ones that implement wetland regulations and development regulations. They do have authority. But again, I'm not an attorney, I am not going to make that judgment call. But I am going to bring all of this information to you guys to, really to discuss, to figure out the best avenue. I don't believe we have the authority to blanketly give somebody the power to do all of these investigations. But then again, I am not a lawyer, I don't know.
Thank you.
So in the EPA audit report, it suggested that there was non-compliance with system implementation, system mapping, and legal enforcement. Other listed discharge. So if EPA is pinging us...
If EPA is pinging us for legal enforcement, shouldn't they be giving us or finding some way to get legal enforcement opportunities? I mean, how can we be held responsible for something we don't have?
I actually have implemented these talks with the state through DES.
Okay.
And I have not received an answer back yet, which is why we're not coming forward at this point. It's complicated, it's not a simple answer. Right now, DES has the authority. And so we report to them, basically, is what happens right now.
Yeah, it just feels like, I mean, and it's not an unfunded mandate, but it's a, it's an unsupported requirement.
Right.
I mean, how can we go do something when they won't give us the authority to do something and then ping us about it?
Right, and it's at a state level at this point, so.
Right, okay.
We've asked those questions.
You are working at it as best you can.
We've asked those questions, yes.
All right, thanks. Any other questions or comments? Paul, do you have something?
Dawn, are you still, sorry, you still the chairman of the group, or did you?
Yes.
So, so when the coalition gets together, it's because Dawn gets them together. And Dawn pushes, has been pushing. And the reason why this coalition is so strong is because of Dawn. And the stuff, and the way she said about moving paper and drafts back and forth. Because of, right there, sitting at the table, and that's why we're, that's why we went through that audit so smoothly, because of Dawn, with the EPA. So I just want people at home to know that, I want to know, let Dawn know that we, I appreciate you doing that. Because I sat in on some of those calls and... It was good for insomnia. But, so.
Dawn, you're not making him exciting, come on now.
I don't think it was Dawn that was trying to make him exciting. But I have all the faith in Kevin, too, to lead those, to lead the group of interns we have and get them out there. Because those are the ones who are tracking down a lot of these outfalls and testing and things of that sort. So they're, they're using their resources to the utmost when they have them to get them done and get the job done so that we don't get EPA knocking on our door saying, "We're doing something wrong."
Yeah. Barbara?
Yeah, just a question. I'm still trying to learn all the interdependencies, because I'm new to the planning board. So in MCM number four, where it talks about code and regulation in regards to construction site, construction runoff control. Dawn, I know you occasionally go out to some of the construction sites and see what they're doing out there. But is that something that, under this particular MCM, that would be part of your office? To actually look at all the plates and see what the plans are for stormwater runoff before the construction even begins?
They are reviewed before any construction begins.
Okay, so you get to see all of those?
We see them before. A third party reviews a lot of that information. I have a very narrowed scope of what I review through the plans.
Okay, so that kind of falls under peer review when they send it out for that?
Exactly.
Okay.
But community development are the ones that are in charge of that particular part.
And you guys, you mentioned community development having some authority, and they give you information, but you guys are working well with them hand in hand, I mean, we're all one town, kind of thing.
Yes.
Great.
Okay, great. Any other questions or comments? Kevin, I, thanks for joining us, I'm glad to have you here with us in Merrimack, helping us out with this stuff. You got your plate full. And just supporting Dawn is going to be a full plate, I'm sure. We keep her busy, not the council, but, you know, she's, she's got plenty of stuff to do, and you're going to...
I have witnessed it, yes.
Help her out. So we appreciate that, and thank you for this report, both of you. It's terrific to hear that we're making progress and, although it's, it's not totally clear exactly where we're going to end up on all this. It's, it seems like we're maybe making some progress, so that's good.
We've made great strides since Kevin's come.
Well, that's good, that's great.
Absolutely, he is concentrated on that, which has allowed me to go to other avenues, other things that I need to address in the town.
Okay.
Like roundabouts.
Rotaries. All right, thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Thank you, and thank you for your time.
Thanks. I asked them to bring the interns here and have the interns give the presentation, but they said no.
There you go.
Just a quick question, Paul, just so the public knows. Every summer, we hire interns to do various things.
Correct.
How many interns do we have this summer just working on this, do you know?
We have five interns, I think, what, four of them here in the general, what we call general government, and we have one actually down at wastewater as well. So we hired five interns to work.
And they're students?
They are students that are studying engineering, they are at least sophomores. We try to get sophomores so we can get them over a number of years. We actually have two sisters who have come back for the third year, third year there. But we're not going to get them for the fourth year because they graduated, but they're in their master's program. And they're the ones who have been working on a lot of the testing and finding the outfalls and, you know, going into, going into water well past their shoulders to find out that this is where it is with the hip waders and things of that sort. They love it.
I was going to say, they probably do love it, that's why they're doing it.
So, yeah, but, yeah, we have five total, one at wastewater, four that work here with Dawn and Kevin.
Perfect, thank you.
Great, thank you. Okay, that brings us to number three on our agenda, a request to withdraw funds from the Solid Waste Capital Reserve Fund for purchase of two new steel, open-top, live-floor trailers. Submitted by Public Works Director Kyle Fox and Solid Waste Foreman Chris Perro. The Solid Waste Division of Public Works is requesting the town council authorize a withdrawal from the Solid Waste Equipment Capital Reserve Fund of $159,994 to purchase two new steel-body, open-top, live-floor trailers to replace two 2005 live-floor trailers as part of the planned equipment replacement program.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is, we come before you tonight to request this withdrawal from the capital reserve fund. These have been planned on for a number of years. These are the trailers that we haul off all the trash and construction debris out of the recycle, out of the site, out of the transfer station site. They're on the road five days, six days a week. They get filled and taken out, and brought up to our Pembroke or our lad fill where we dump our construction waste. These were replacing two original trailers that were bought when we took over the operations at the transfer station. And like I said, these have been in the plan for a number of years to be replaced. We replaced two a couple of years ago, one and one. Then we replaced one of the tractors. What we're trying to do is because it's so close to the new fiscal year, which starts in three days, three days. So we're trying to bridge both fiscal years. So we, we get the one from this fiscal year, 2021, and we get the one that was planned on being purchased in 2122. By bidding them together, we got a better deal than trying to buy one-offs. And, hope I didn't steal all the thunder, Kevin, Chris, and Kyle, take it away.
Thank you, Paul. So, yes, you stole everything I was going to say. So, so that's wonderful, thank you so much. Chris is here to give a more detailed kind of discussion on how he made the decision on which bid to go with and which bid to recommend to you folks. And then, of course, we'd entertain any questions that you might have.
Okay.
And let me just say, it isn't, yeah, I'm going to steal Chris's. We're bringing this forward because of the capital reserve, which I forgot to say, is that the town councils are agents to expend out of the capital reserve fund. So what we're trying to do is we're trying to tell Merrimack what we're buying and how we came up with, with the solution to buy. What we're really asking the council for is to allow us to take the $154,000, $159,000 out of the capital reserve funds to buy these, which we do have sufficient money in the capital reserve fund because we have been saving for it. So in doing that, Chris will be here to answer some of those other questions that might come along as well.
Sure. So what I'd like to do is kind of walk you through my thought process. We received bids from two vendors. One, of course, was Spectre Manufacturing. They are the manufacturer of the trailers we have now. We have, currently have four, three live floor or moving trailers, as well as the end dump for demolition. And the other vendor was Utility Trails of New England. They provide MAC trailers, which are aluminum trailer. It's kind of a new, new thought process to Merrimack, at least. In my prior experience, I worked for another municipality for 12 years, and they had a commercial hauler that used exclusively aluminum trailers. So I set up a little table to kind of walk through my thought process. Interestingly enough, the trade-in allowance from both vendors were the same. That's kind of a wash for me, it's $1,500. I asked the vendor to also include something that he had in stock, trying to avoid any wait period. We're currently looking at 150 to 180 days for these trails to be made. So, again, I posed the question, was there anything in the yard somewhere, is anything in stock that we could use right away? So that's why you see a step-up process. So the first bid, of course, the Spectre, $81,500 per trailer, which comes out to the 160 that Paul mentioned. And then we go on to the aluminum trailers, there's a smooth side, a 45-foot trailer, at a cost of $91,000 per trailer, coming at 180, or a aluminum post and sheet trailer. It's a little more apples-to-apples for what we have now, we see the traditional side of the trailer with the post vertical. Those are a little more expensive, those are $92,800. And then finally, the one that I mentioned, anything in stock, they did have a 48-foot trailer. Only one is available, that was a cost of $94,000. Unfortunately, a 48-foot trailer would not work for our location. Where we live-load the trailers, there's a limitation, there's a bollard-to-bollard, and that distance is just over 45 feet. So our driver is literally back into that space. So we really want to be able to take advantage of the extra three feet with our setup. We'd be interfering with the building and/or garage doors, simply. So again, to walk through my thought process, the initial pros of the steelers trailer is that the initial upset cost was less, almost $10,000. And another important fact I hung my hat on was the warranty. Spectre trailers offer a five-year manufacturer warranty, while aluminum trails only offer two. And also, again, I like the idea of having a steel trailer. One of the most vulnerable parts of our operation is the top of the trailers. Uh, for those that haven't been up there, we, we live load and we're almost level with the trailer. So we're taking a loader, dumping in, and then packing the trash. So if something should happen, an operator slips and catches the edge of that trailer, the steel is simply more forgiving. The aluminum is just costly to repair and, and more susceptible to, uh, to damage. One of the cons that I struggled with is because of that upfront cost, with every steel trailer we've had, three out of the four, we've incurred an average cost of eleven thousand in parts and labor to re, replate the inside of the trailer. Um, one of the downfalls of these steel trails is they literally rush from the inside out. As time goes on, it seems around that eleven year mark, we need to address some repairs with these trailers. And that cost has been right around eleven thousand dollars. So now you're wrestling with that difference of upfront cost versus maintenance. Uh, one of the cons of having a steel trailer is simply weight. A steel trailer operates around twenty-seven thousand pounds, one aluminum is only twenty thousand pounds. But unfortunately, with our operation, weight isn't an issue. It's, it's, it's cubic yards, it's volume. Our trails all go out water level full, but we're only running anywhere between eighty thousand to ninety thousand pounds. So you see a lot of commercial haulers run the aluminum, take advantage of that weight difference where that doesn't really apply here. Uh, so ultimately, my recommendation would be to go continue with Spectre trailers to purchase the two steel trailers that Paul mentioned. I feel this satisfied, we've been satisfied with the importance of these trailers and the service provided. Um, again, many of the benefits of aluminum trailer do not apply to our application. And again, my concerns with the durability of those top rails of these two trailers. I think steel is the way to go and not to mention the cost and easier repair of a steel trailer versus aluminum trailer. We've proven that steel is something we can repair in-house relatively easily, where aluminum offers, offers more challenges. So ultimately, my, my, my consideration has been to stick with Spectre and purchase two steel trailers. I feel they suit our needs in the immediate sense and as well as the long-term sense.
So Chris, the, the two-year warranty versus the five-year warranty, what is the warranty buying you if you're not having to repair those steel ones for eleven years?
It's, it's, it's the running gear. It's the, the spring hangers, that sort of thing.
And, and we just haven't had the issues? Do we really not see problems with those?
No, again, nothing.
It's also the live floor.
Correct, live floor itself.
So yeah, so it's for having five years on a live floor versus two years on a live floor is significant. Cause when you dump it in the trash, and that's the way that it comes out, you can't vertically lift the trailer on an end dump and dump it. So it's moving back and forth and if one of the, it moves all the time. And since we're, it's not like these trailers are sitting for weeks at a time. They're being rotated in there two, sometimes three times a week there. They're unloading. So having that extra three years for that, especially for that live floor is definitely worth it.
So I guess the question is, how much trouble does the live floor give us warranty wise? Do we need to repair, replace those more often than that eleven-year number you were giving us?
We've been fortunate, again, it's around that eleven-year mark that we've had issues. They've been replaced in the past. But the way we load, we're only really affecting the top third of the trailer. We're not touching the bottom like some applications. So we've been fortunate. We haven't had much damage at all.
Okay. Thanks. Barbara?
What's a live floor?
Yeah, so, so Paul kind of explained it a little bit.
The, the, the trans light.
It, it really is just that, um, I, I didn't know it until five years ago.
It's like a series of slats.
It's not a conveyor. They're, they're little skinny steel slats and hydraulically they just move back and forth next to each other.
Uh-huh.
And it just kinda.
Works the stuff out the back.
It's like magic. I don't know how it works.
This is an opportunity for touch a truck day.
Absolutely. Although, I, I will say you won't find a more, um, smelly piece of equipment than those trailers. They, they make White Water smell like the, uh, Petunia Factory.
We wanna look at them when they're brand new.
Yes.
And one more question for you, Chris. Do they do some kind of rust treatment preventative on these when you, they deliver them?
Not that I'm aware of.
Are they rusted Liam or something?
It's certainly worth looking into. I mean, we wash them professionally twice a year and we, our drivers wash them weekly. But like I said, they rust from the inside out. So maybe something like that's worth looking into.
And, and part, part of the reason they rust out, uh, faster than normal vehicles is it's not just salt rust, um, like, like normal vehicles experience. It's the corrosive nature of the trash itself. There's a whole lot of stuff in there that's rubbing up against the edge of that steel.
Lon?
Yeah, I appreciate the, um, questions about live floors and so on.
Yeah, Lon should answer these.
I can tell you that, um, I was very much, um, present when, uh, we started out there with the trailers that many years ago. Um, and I don't recall, other than normal maintenance or whatever, that they were terribly problematic.
Yeah.
And I can tell you, um, that I agree with the assessment that the steel body, um, for the operation, and I don't know if you've ever watched as they load trailers out there. Kids do all the time and you wanna be a big kid. Um, but your description was very accurate in terms of up goes a bucket load of trash. Yes, the operators know to get the bucket properly placed. But trash on the transfer floor is trash. And there are objects which probably shouldn't be there that occasionally show up. And they're the ones that are going to get spread out and, not that I've seen it, but I would think that they would more easily go through an aluminum sided trailer than a steel, causing the kind of repairs case we're talking about. Um, all I wish to say, I think your assessment is, is in, uh, right on the money with what I've, what I saw out there for the seven years I was there. Well, go with the steel trailers.
Thank you, Lon. Andy?
Thank you. I, I was actually gonna do some financial comparisons, steel against trailers or steel against aluminum, but I think Lon talked me out of it. Experienced talks. Um, the hundred and fifty-day waiting list for the trailer to be built, does that present any challenges?
Uh, no, I'm confident the trails we have will last at least that time. So no.
Just continue to use our trailers until they deliver and then we'll trade those in?
Yeah.
And then the sheet here says the capital improvement plan budgeted seventy K, um, for each one of these years. These trailers are just a little bit more than that. That's not a challenge?
No, it's not a challenge because we had some other savings, um, with, uh, some of the other purchases that, that we did have before, prior. I think our, our tractor came in less than we were budgeting and I believe one of our loaders came in a little less than what we were budgeting for in the capital reserve. So we should be fine.
And then the last question, do, do we know what the discount is by doing a, a two-piece buy versus a one-piece?
They didn't bid it that way. They just bid two.
Okay.
Nancy?
The other comment I wanna make, I liked the way you presented.
Thank you.
Truly, because it was a thought process that I could follow and it made perfect sense. And, and you did the pros and cons. So I appreciated that method of presentation. So thank you.
Okay. If there are no other questions, do we have a motion? Lon?
I moved that we, um, expend hundred and fifty-nine thousand nine hundred and four dollars to purchase two new steel body five-floor live floor, my apologies, trailers to replace two two thousand and five live floor trailers as part of the planned equipment replacement program for the solid waste division.
Is that good? Do you need authorization to sign anything or?
Yeah, that's one of the friendly minutes.
Including authorization for the town manager to sign any paperwork necessary.
And to withdraw from the solid waste.
And to withdraw from the solid waste capital reserve fund. Is that part of your motion to? Seconded by, by Andy. So motion was made by Lon and seconded by Andy to approve the purchase of two new steel body live floor trailers with the funding coming from the solid waste equipment capital reserve or solid. Fund. Um, any other comments on that? Seeing none, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed or abstaining? That passes seven zero zero. Thanks, guys. Good job, Chris. Um, it brings us to item number four on our agenda. The Town of Merrimack and the Merrimack Youth Association Agreement Review, submitted by Town Manager Paul McCally, the town council to consider the renewal of a three-year agreement between the Town of Merrimack and the Merrimack Youth Association.
I just wanna make a note, uh, John Calabro, who's the head of MYA, was supposed to be here this evening, but he had emergency surgery. So he's gonna be able to, he's okay though. I spoke to him on the phone. Um, and I, he obviously could not make it this evening. But I do believe that he's been working closely with Paul on this contract and he could probably answer any questions we might have. Is that correct?
That is correct. I'll try to give you a brief overview of the contract. Um, MYA is looking for a three-year contract. That's normally what we have signed in the past. However, the last couple of years, we have done one-year contracts, uh, with the MYA. Uh, last year, they came in and asked if we could, uh, include out-of-town participants for football, lacrosse, and the wrestling. Uh, this year they're asking as, to balance off as needed spots are available. Um, with COVID, there was a need because other communities were actually, um, not holding programs. So we gave other communities a chance for kids to come in. They respectfully did not displace any Merrimack kids. They made sure all the Merrimack kids were placed first and then out-of-towners, out-of-town kids were then to fill out the remaining roster spots. Um, they still have that same plan in mind going forward. There are some organizations, I don't remember if you remember, but John talked about it last year when he was doing this. There's some, uh, organizations such as, they're not with Pop Warner anymore, but the football program itself. Um, you can't pilfer another town if they have the program. So as long as the other town has the program, the kid can't, the, the, the cheerleader or the football player cannot come over and play for Merrimack if their town has a program. These would be for kids if their towns do not have a program to come and play in Merrimack, if that's the case. There is also an upcharge for these kids to come and play in Merrimack because we do help supplement some of these programs and there's an upcharge for these kids to come. And I can't remember off the top of my head what that upcharge is, but it's more. So if, if, for instance, if basketball's twenty-five dollars, these kids might be playing thirty-five, forty, fifty dollars to come play basketball for the Town of Merrimack. So there is the upcharge on that. Um, once again, three-year deal. Uh, the other thing is, is that, uh, they, John went out and took pictures of the signage. We, you know, we had some signage back, so he redid all the signage that they have at the ball field that have been approved. The scoreboard that actually shows Sweet Ginger, the scoreboard here that actually shows Haywood's, uh, the convenient MD's signs that are out there. What they did with the, um, with the baseball, remember we were talking about that blue banner with the baseball, with the other signs? So he's put that back and that's in the appendices after page eight. So he took out some language about the, the, the Veterans Park backstop. He took that out because he's included a picture of that in the back. And those are the only signs that they can put up during this three-year period without prior approval. So if they get another sponsor, they wanna put up a sign, they have to come and get approval for that sign to be put up on the fence. Um, just some housekeeping issues. The big one is, is, um, is number eighteen and that's the payment of funds. The last couple of years, we were struggling with the audit and we were paying a monthly and then we'd come to the council in December and say, we didn't get the audit yet. We'd hold the payment, hold the payment, hold the payment. So when the last contractor said, we're gonna pay you January first. And if you don't have the audit by January first, you get down X percentage until you get it. If it's not in by June, June, you don't get any money. What the MYA has asked, because for two years now, they actually have met the deadline for the audit. Uh, they have done everything the town has asked. They got a bookkeeper outside the MYA. The bookkeeper keeps the books. They have moved everybody to one accounting system. They have gone with an auditor who is known to the Town of Merrimack, who knows that they need to complete the audit by August thir, uh, August thirty-first, December thirty-first, and they have come up and, and have completed the audits by that time period. Um, they have worked very closely, excuse me, with the MYA. So what John asked was a fifty-fifty split, fifty percent in July, fifty in December. And what I said to him is that, uh, I don't think that would work, um, due to prior, prior, uh, experiences. That fifty percent of your funding is still a lot of money to some of these programs. And they might not wanna come pony up, so to speak, and, and work with the bookkeeper, get their stuff in when asked. Um, they need a little more skin in the game. And I understand you need the money upfront because in July you get some programs that are starting, they need seed money to begin for the next year, meaning buying uniforms, paying for some insurances and things of that sort. So they need some seed money and, and I understand that. So I said, I propose a sixty-forty split, where you give forty percent upfront. This way they still have a bigger nut towards the end if they don't get the audit in. And I talked to John about this and he's in agreement that, yes, this will keep the programs from having, not participating in the audit and giving, not giving the paperwork when necessary because of the issues that we have had in the past when we have given the funding all along until December and they, I'll get to it when I get to it. People are busy. This is my volunteer job. And that's the other thing kinda, John iterated to me is that it's a volunteer organization and they do a great job with the volunteerism and, and doing this. And they have done everything the town has asked. So I do not see that as a hardship if we go forty percent in July so they can get some seed money into the programs. And then the majority of the money of these programs won't get it until the audit is given to us in January. And if not, there's still that penalty clause, ten percent per month until June. And if they don't have it by June, they lose the sixty percent. So we're, we're able to do that. They, the MYA also has some costs that are associated like the audit and the bookkeeper. They gotta pay them no matter what. So they need some of this forty percent to help get, get the money to pay for those services that they're performing. So that's the audit, uh, the audit, that's the, uh, contract in a nutshell. It's, it's for a three-year term, um, beginning July first, two thousand twenty-one ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four.
Nancy?
As a council rep, I just have a few words to say if you would let me. Uh, I was also on the board and I was very much behind, um, making sure that the MYA was clear from us what was required because of the inability to, to respond to the need for the auditing and meeting criteria. Um, being on the board, I think it, I've been on the board a year, but even prior to that time, I believe the MYA reflected, because it's been two years now, a really good effort. And I think they've maintained that for another year. In fact, have improved. And as I said to them, one of the first meetings I had, I said, you know, I'm not gonna be here. Your policies, your policies. I said, but we have a responsibility because we have taxpayer money that does assist. But we want you to succeed. You need to know that. We are behind you and we understand as volunteers. And the hardest part is to get it done. Once you do it, once you have your system set, it'll be to your advantage. And they were, it was very difficult, but I think they are where we need them to be. So I feel comfortable with what Paul and basically John have agreed to. The other component I wanted just to address for a moment is the idea of the out-of-town, uh, participants. One of the arguments that you didn't mention, Paul, which I think is also important, is related to the ages of the particular levels and the safety. When you don't have enough kids to be able to fulfill like an under twelve, like ten to elevens, and you don't have enough, you have to get thirteens in or nine-year-olds in. So the span of age group within that team is really too wide. And there is a safety issue because as we all know, as you get older, your skill gets better, the, the game gets more aggressive, whatever. And the nine-year-old should not be playing with thirteen-year-olds. This method, they're able to probably have more teams, but have that age group. This method, they're able to probably have more teams, but have that age group much more refined. Because, but it's going to be a smaller amount for Merrimack. But if you have out-of-town groups, then you have enough to fill a team, for example. So that was one of the arguments that was presented. Hopefully, I didn't confuse you. Did I did all right? Okay. I confused myself, I think. But I think that was also an important issue related to out-of-town as well.
Nancy Murphy?
Thank you. I just have a question on, actually related to the same section that Nancy was talking about on page one. It says, "The town is desirous of making certain recreational programs available." And I don't know if that was the language before, because it was limited to the football and lacrosse. Are there only going to be certain, I mean, or is it going to be any program in the MYA will be out-of-town?
If there will be any that would require it, if you have enough in-town kids, you wouldn't need to, you wouldn't have space.
Is your mic on?
Thank you. If you had enough in-town participants for a particular team, you wouldn't need to. In fact, there'd be no room for them. I'm not sure if that answers that question.
Yeah, no, I, oh, go ahead.
Don't go.
Oh, I was just going to say, I, I, I get that, but I'm wondering if, I don't know, just the language. To me, it could be interpreted that only certain programs, maybe soccer and football will be the program itself, rather than based on the need, you know, for numbers. So it may be, I don't know, just the language to me would, I don't know, would probably make more sense to spell out all recreational programs with an insufficient number of whatever, rather than certain programs. Because I think that might be misinterpreted, or could be.
When we did this, we wrote the word "certain" in there, because we were specific of wrestling, lacrosse, and football. What Nancy's saying is if we take that word "certain" out, and it will read, "The town is desirous of making recreational programs available to the youth of Merrimack with the addition of out-of-town participants as needed to balance out."
And actually, it makes it wider, doesn't it? It makes it more inclusive.
And the only other thing that I was going to ask on that is, it, it doesn't say, though I think it's assumed, but it doesn't say specifically that it's based on availability that the Merrimack children will be placed first. I don't, I mean, I don't see a place where it says that, you know, Merrimack, I mean, and I, I know.
Yeah, Paul, you mentioned something about some particular sports.
Yeah, I.
Address that.
Right. They, they address that you can't pilfer other communities. We, we could put something in there. I'm sure John, we could, we could put something in there that basically says that.
Priority will be given.
Priority will be given to Merrimack residents in filling out rosters.
I think that's very, very reasonable.
Barbara?
While we're talking about that one, I also have another change. Because the wording here is "as needed to balance rosters." Balance, to me, does not mean the same thing as to fill open positions on rosters that are not, there is no availability for Merrimack residents. So balance needs to get taken out and be worded there. And I have a couple of other ones, too, for you.
Where is that, just?
That's on the first page as well.
It's the red line in the second paragraph.
Same, the same thing.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. It's that same paragraph.
So what would you say there instead?
I would just say, take out the word "balance," "as needed to fill open positions on teams."
Why don't we just say "as needed"?
That's fine, too. But I think balance doesn't work there. That means something very different to me.
Just as needed is fine.
Does anybody else have questions on that topic about out-of-town players? Okay, you had other questions, other comments, Barbara?
Yeah, I did. Over on page three, number 17, where it says, "MYA each October, December," I'm sorry, "December audited financials." But it says modified accrual basis, prepared on a modified accrual basis. Seeing how the MYA are all volunteers, and they may not be actuarials or CPAs or bookkeepers. Yeah. But can we, like, define what that means?
That basically means that it's modified cash. We do a modified accrual basis for the Town of Merrimack as well when we do our audits. It's an auditing terminology that any auditing firm will know what to do with.
Okay, so if we're all gone in a year, somebody's going to pick this up and understand what that means?
They, they will ask the CPA or the finance director what, what that means, and we can explain what it is. And basically, what it is, is that we don't do full accrual accounting all throughout the year. It's, it's cash basis until June 30th, and then that's when you, you're not looking at your checkbook balance as of June 30th. You got some bills coming in, and you put them in against your income and loss, profit and loss statements. So that's a real simple, simple explanation for modified accrual basis.
You see what I mean? And over, and continuing on that paragraph over on page four, it goes on to talk about, and I'm having a flashback, we might have talked about this last year, about this. A severe modified, oh, I'm sorry, severe, don't my glasses on, material weakness. What does that mean? Because what may be severe to you may not be severe to me and vice versa.
There, there are standards that any auditor who goes through and does look at internal controls will look at whether or not they are, they can meet internal controls or if they're severe. A severe internal control would be, I said I had $500,000 in revenue in XYZ program, and they cannot come back and trace through the internal controls and trace that $500,000 back to actually being able to audit and say, "Yes, you did have $500,000 in receivables." That would be a severe internal control or a severe material weakness. It is defined by generally accepted accounting principles with an accountant. GAAP, it's GAAP, but auditing is basically, auditing, when you audit, you got to follow your standards. GAAP standard, generally accepted accounting principles, and GAAS, generally accepted auditing standards. And they actually spell out what a severe material weakness is versus just a material weakness versus just a informational, this is what we saw in the audit.
Well, the audit actually uses that term.
Yes, that's terminology in financial words.
But if I put three auditors together who all looked at the same material, would I get different findings on severe versus non-severe?
You're going to get three people, and me and Tom might, might differ with that. We, it's, it, it is not up for debate. It's up for what the audit, when they look at the audit, it's terminology within the audit of what is severe and what is considered severe. For one auditor, for the Town of Merrimack, a material weakness is or could, because we're so large, I think our material threshold might be $200,000. For the MYA, they might be $2,000. So, so when you talk in severity, it could difference based on the size. But a severe material weakness is a severe material weakness no matter what. It's looking at your internal controls, and if you're internal control, if you're not following your internal controls and you're going outside your internal controls, that's a severe material weakness in the accounting realm, in the audit realm.
But isn't that what you're paying a CPA to do?
That's what you're paying a CPA to look at.
And in the end, because I, the only reason I know that, because I remember reading the actual audit, and the summary said that there was a substantial material weakness, and therefore was unable to.
And they weren't able to give a finding.
Literally could not do a finding because of it.
But you see what I mean. You said the wording in the report was substantial material weakness. Here, it says severe material weakness.
But the point is that the auditor will put that terminology, my understanding is, in the summary statement. So we, they're being paid to make a judgment.
Oh, I know that, but you see what I'm saying, is that, okay, so that auditor said it.
We have to trust the auditor.
It was a substantial material weakness, right?
It was not a severe material weakness.
Yeah, so what's the difference between the severe and the substantial? I don't know.
Well.
So already, we're not using the same lingo.
But the auditor will tell us where the limitations are. What is it that makes them, if the judgment is substantial, whatever, they're going to tell us what, upon what facts that determination is made, which is probably more important than the severe or the whatever.
Okay.
Am I, am I correct or not?
No, I get you, but I just have some disconnect.
But that's a terminology they use. We can't stop them from using it.
Oh, definitely not.
Severe is a terminology that, when you do an audit, it is. It's, it's known throughout the auditing industry of a severe material weakness, what it is.
But making that determination is up to the CPA.
Right.
And we have to trust the CPA, because that's what they're being paid for.
And remember, a certified public accountant can only do one thing. You get your certified public, I'm a certified public accountant. My license only lets me do one thing. I can do taxes. I can do bookkeeping. I don't have to be a CPA. To audit, you have to audit underneath a certified public accountant, because there's rules and regulations you need to follow and laws you need to follow to be able to do an audit. And what you're paying for in an audit is that CPA and that skill. And that manager, the partner, whoever oversees this audit, is making that determination from their staff when they come back to say, "We had a problem where we couldn't tie out revenue, or we couldn't tie out these expenses, or we couldn't, we came up with $100,000 more in expenses than they had." That's a severe material weakness. So they're making that, the CPA is making that, that call, it's not a judgment call, they're making that call based on a lot of other factors that go along. There's audit risk, there's control risk. There are a lot of other factors in, in the process that make the determination, whether it's severe, substantial, just a weakness, not a material weakness. There's a lot of other factors that go in, in an audit, when you do an audit, that you've set your thresholds and things of that sort. So this is terminology that an auditor would go through and look at.
Okay. Nancy?
Thank you. I just have one more question. In that same paragraph we talked about before, that page one, second paragraph. I know that, that Paul, you had mentioned in the past, the, the children from towns that didn't have a particular program running were allowed to participate in the Merrimack sports. Now, I mean, pretty much all local towns have, you know, and now the COVID's sort of at a different place at least. Does that, so there will be no stipulations? It will be any town at any point is allowed to. There are no, there are no restrictions. Like, if a town has a particular program, they can or cannot participate with Merrimack. There will be no restrictions.
I, I will double-check with John, but I believe there are restrictions that you cannot pilfer another kid from another town.
I believe you're right. And actually, there were only two towns. It was Amherst, Amherst and Bedford, I believe. Because they didn't have whatever, what they had, lacrosse or whatever it was.
This also, and not to muddy the waters, because it can get muddy real quick, but you have divorced mother and father. The kid comes to school in Merrimack. The father lives in Amherst. He signs his kid up for sports in Amherst, or can he sign his kids up for sports in Merrimack and play sports with the kids that, that he goes to school with? And, and that kind of also is, is he a Merrimack resident, is he a Bedford resident, is he Amherst resident? As long as one of the parents, the council said, lives in Merrimack, the kid can be considered a Merrimack resident when it comes to playing sports. He just can't play on the Merrimack team and the Amherst team or the Merrimack and Bedford team. He has to pick one or the other town.
And really, what was brought to us in the past was that it's for the football and those things that Nancy alluded to.
The wrestling program.
I don't think that they really wanted to expand the rec programs to any great degree. It's not that they wanted to do that. I really believe their, their thought is just for those few that they can fulfill for safety reasons and just numbers' sake. And in the end, while it's not just one year now, it'll be for three years. In, in the end, in three years, we could say, "All right, we're not in agreement with that anymore." So, but I get your points for sure. I just, it's one of those things that, for me, I'm, I'm a little comfortable, more, more comfortable, maybe, recognizing that the verbiage isn't as precise as we might be able to make it. I just don't know how to make it that way.
In years past, it's always been wrestling they've been struggling with. It's always been lacrosse they've been struggling with, because a lot of communities don't want to, didn't want to offer lacrosse. Lacrosse has become.
Big.
Exponentially large in this, this sport now. It's, it could be baseball that they're not offering in these programs, because kids are playing soccer and they're playing lacrosse, because it's a quicker game. It's a more in-and-out. It's not, okay, pitch the ball.
Wait.
Wait. And I played baseball, so I can say that. It, it could get boring at times. So, but, you know, I think those are the programs that they, they were looking at initially, and football, because, like you said, I coached. I had, I coached junior Pee-wee, which was supposed to be seventh graders. Pat Davis, one of our employees, I coached him. He was in fourth grade playing with seventh graders.
Yeah, see, that's dangerous.
Because it was weight class at the time, so it's dangerous. So I understand where they're coming from with this, is now they do it, they, they're in a different program, and they do it by grade. So that also helps. But you don't want to pull a fifth grader or a fourth grader and move them up and play with, with a sixth or seventh grader, because, especially in the football, they could get hurt real quick. So.
Barbara, did you have anything else?
Nope.
Oh, okay.
I know it's an error.
So I have some heartburn over the, the payment schedule in a three-year cycle. We say that we'll pay them the first 40% on or about July, June 1.
July 1.
Oh.
Should be July 1.
Whatever it is.
Yeah.
Should be July 1, whatever it says.
Yeah, July 1.
There's July 1. And the second one, in January 1. And if they don't make their audit, they won't cut back, and they might not make anything throughout the year. But then the 1st of July for the next year comes around, and the second year of the audit, and they get paid 40%.
I.
With or without the audit in.
I think we can put language in there that if the preceding audit is not, not.
Still not in place.
Yes, hasn't been received.
No further payments.
No further payments will be made.
Perfect. That's a good, good catch.
I believe John would be, be amenable to that.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any other questions or comments? Lon?
Yeah, the last time this was in front of us, this counselor didn't support it based on the language about the kids from other towns. I'm comfortable with what I was reading prior to the meeting. I, I suspect there will be perhaps a little added wisdom in the language as we, if we see it again, when we see it again.
Yes.
Okay. The longer we talk about it, the less support I have.
I need a motion. Do we want a motion at this point, or do we, or you need to come back with a final?
I think with the changes that were made, and let me work on tightening, I know what the council's saying about the language. Let me work with them on tightening that language, if you give me that latitude. You can make a motion that you would be based upon, yes.
What if they don't agree?
They don't agree, they don't get a contract. I don't sign the contract, and I come back and tell you that.
Okay.
Or you, I could bring it, the, the thing is, is July 1 is, you know, a week away. Literally, a week away. So, you know, which doesn't matter to me. I could tell them that we're, we have these changes, we're going to bring it back for final approval on the 15th of July, which is 14 days. So as long as they know it is, is in sight with the contract because of the additional funds.
So I guess, what's the will of the council at this point? Somebody want to make a motion, or? Lon?
I think MYA ought to have a shot at looking at some of the new language we're proposing. I, I mean, be, before we agree to a contract. I mean, that, it just seems a little unfair. It's like checking and raising or something to bring this here, and then our comments and our suggestion, and that the town manager has taken, change. It, it doesn't appear to change it, but it changes it, and they ought to know that. And I would like their consent before being asked to vote on it. If I am tonight, I'm going to vote against it.
All right. Any other comments?
Delay in this until the next council meeting, does that have any effect on the?
Well, they won't get paid on or about July 1, but.
For the first year.
That would be the only.
I mean, you could, you could change that to July 30th, right? First payment on July.
July 15th, or, you know, anything.
Or whenever, after the next council meeting?
Yeah, it, it would be in. Yeah, it, it would be in there for, for future, and then it would just, once the, it's, based on the date signed, it's like any contract, yeah.
Well, I guess I'm asking, what does that delay, does that have an effect on them?
I don't know. And, and really, I think a lot of this language could have been worked out tonight if, if John didn't have his emergency surgery. So I'm sure he's been-
I think a couple of weeks will make a difference, to be honest with you.
Right. They, they have enough money to-
Yeah, I don't thi, I mean, if they weren't gonna get paid until August, September, or later, December.
January.
By the past contracts, this, anything we do is an improvement for them.
Yeah.
So I-
I think it's reasonable for the next meeting.
Okay, I don't have a problem with that, I'll bring it back.
Well, you, you've got input from us.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yep.
Sorry. The, uh, next item on our agenda is a discussion about PFAS and New Hampshire fact sheet. Town council discussed how to promote the New Hampshire PFAS fact sheet. This was presented or brought forward by Barbara Healy.
Well, actually, it was a sheet that, a teaching aid that had been sent to us by Lorene Allen, who is one of the founding members of Merrimack Citizens for Clean Water. Um, and she had been working with others on this, uh, in order to collect this information. And, and really what I brought it, I wanted to do with it was to see how the council felt about maybe this is our first step in our expanded communication that we discussed at a prior meeting, um, and how we might want to handle this. We do have, um, the Town of Merrimack website. But although PFAS is mentioned on that website, the, the whole page is really just, um, links to DES. So they would have to, you know, amend it to a, an article or, or something where this would be available to be seen by the public. You know, there is, I bumped into this this week. There is in Facebook, a Town of Merrimack Town Hall page.
A what?
There is a page in Facebook called The Town of Merrimack Town Hall. And I thought that was interesting. So, and there are various announcements that have been put out there by different departments, actually. So- I don't know. That's why I thought I'd bring it up.
That's why our town manager is frantically looking it up right now.
So I think I saw some things there by Parks and Rec, and I can't remember who all else. So- Uh, couldn't tell you, but it was under their block. Their, their, uh-
Government organization.
So anyways, I just thought I'd bring that out, and, you know, we could chat about it really quickly, just to see what is the-
Who are those two people?
Preference of the, of the council. What's that?
What? Yeah. Those two guys do, do a television show.
Yeah, but they have nothing to do with the Town of Merrimack Town Hall.
3651, 424-3651. Is the number. I believe that is, uh, I think that's right up here.
It is.
It's right up here, I think it's right here. Media. Might be media's webpage.
Well, media has a webpage.
No, it's Diane's.
It's called Merrimack TV.
That's, that's the clerk, then, yeah.
But that's, I mean, aside from what you, Barbara, and you're, this should be looked into, because it, it looks like it's, I, if I were not, it looks like it's an official town thing. And it isn't, is it? Because those two people that are on the page have nothing to do with Town Hall. Anyway, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to-
No, no, that's okay, but I, I, just like I said, I bumped into it like yesterday or the day before, and I just thought, since we were talking about this, I'd bring it up. So anyhow, we'll let, get Paul off the hook and let him go research it.
Right in the middle of the room, didn't you?
Okay, so we have this, um, PFAS information sheet that is available. And what is the, um, preference of the council? Put it on the town website?
I certainly have no problem with linking to it or putting a link to it on the website.
Okay.
But, but as you pointed out, our website is basically a bunch of links.
Yeah.
And I'm guessing you would, you're wanting to do something a little bit more clean or more performative than that?
Well, I mean, this would be a link as well, but it would have to be stored somewhere on, you know, where that link could get it, you know, from town.
Well, I think there's, it's prob, most recently, there were links to DES, but initially it was set up to provide all the documentation that Merrimack has ever done with PFAS.
And I remember that.
So perhaps we should separate it as to DES-related versus particular town. And Becky could probably figure that out.
Yeah.
So I know what you're saying.
Yeah.
But in the beginning, it was all local.
Yes, it was, I remember that.
So maybe we can, uh, but I totally agree with you, I think this is perfectly reasonable to be put on.
So do we need a motion to have that work done, or if we're all comfortable with it? What's your preference, sir?
I'm gonna let Paul finish staring at his phone for a second.
I know, Paul.
He's making faces.
It's like the pictures that are there, what? It's funny.
Yeah.
Someone just made it up.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's an open, it's an open site, it's, somebody made this up. I, I don't know, um, I'll get with Nicholas tomorrow and figure out if he knows what happened with it. He actually gave me a, I asked him to do something, as the council asked about the Facebook page, so. He gave me something, and I've been reviewing it to see if it meets it, so, not to digress against this.
I'm sorry, I-
I believe that, I have asked Becky to put that up, and that was the other thing I was trying to check, but I can't get there with my phone.
Well, I, I want to apologize to you, I didn't mean to-
No, no, I'll put you on the spot.
I was just thinking, well, gee, we get this Town of Merrimack group on Facebook, that would be like really good to put there.
Yeah, no, um, and then this other-
And you're all looking at me blankly, so I said, ooh, this is not good.
This is not an official site for the town.
Yeah, the PFAS resource page, that actually came, this I stole from the Town of Bedford's website, who actually took it from New Hampshire DES. So, and I believe Becky put these up on the website, there should be a link, but I can't get to it on my phone. If not, we can get it linked up there. And I was, I was actually listening when I was looking about, um-
Like who are these people?
The information is out there, but a lot of the information that, why we put the links out there is because it's been linking to DES, because DES now is doing a much better job of putting information up there as it relates to PFAS. And that they're, they, they put all the presentations up there, Litchfield, Bedford, Merrimack, London Dairy, those were all up there. So that's why we were kind of linking that way.
Yeah, but maybe we can just separate it.
We can try to separate it like we had before, but we can look at it. Let, let me work with the ladies in, the ladies in the office and, and come up with a solution or break that out. Versus links versus actually, you can see it.
Again, I apologize, I didn't mean to throw, to embarrass you or throw, I thought everybody knew about it, kinda, sorta. Because I thought, oh, this would be a good place for it.
Yeah, there's, as you know, with Facebook, you can open up a group by, if it's available. If you get so many likes on it, it becomes your page. Because they were talking about that today at the hot dog event.
They had 284 people today. That pla, that site.
That site, yeah.
Okay, I think that's it.
Great. Okay, so you're gonna look into it with, with, uh-
With Nick and the other, my other, the other staff, and see if anybody has actually did that, and, and that's a, a town site.
Yeah, but the PFAS-
Yeah, I'll look into that.
You're gonna work on-
Yes.
How, how we want to present that. Yes. Nancy?
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to thank Merrimack Citizens for Clean Water, Lorene Allen and Carol DePiero, for all their efforts to make sure that whatever information is available gets out to, to our community. And Dartmouth for putting this together, it was a number of people, I think, collaborated. It's a great, a great piece. And as Barbara said, the, you know, the, the more we can, more readily available this information is to citizens, if a lot of people still have questions, it, it certainly answers those. I mean, the other thing I was gonna say is this is the kind of information that the HB 737 Commission, there's a communications subcommittee, and this is the kind of information that we want to make sure that we, we share, not only in our, our community, but in, in all communities. So I would agree, if we can get it out, not just as a link, but something much more specific to Merrimack, I think it's great. No matter what site we get it on, when we finally figure it out. Thank you.
Okay, good. So, so we don't need anything else to go forward with that. That brings us to, uh, meeting minutes from, um, June 10th, Thursday, June 10th, 2021. We have only the one set of minutes to review. Do we have a motion to accept the minutes?
Motion to accept the minutes from June 10th, 2021, as written.
Second?
Motion by Barbara to accept the minutes, seconded by Nancy, were there any corrections or none? Not that you have. Does anybody have any corrections? Changes, deletions?
She does.
Oh, you do?
Only one.
Oh, I thought you said as written.
Well, that-
You, you were just kidding me.
Just joshing.
I don't know what I was, um, on page four, line one and two, planning board should be capitalized.
Absolutely. And it is later on.
Yes, and before too.
Oh, okay.
Who's that? I literally, I literally thought that was somebody talking. I figured as much.
They pick them off all the time.
I thought it was some gal that had taken the minutes and she's listening in and just chimed in, and you're just like, okay. Okay. So if, if there are no other further corrections, all those in favor of the minutes as corrected, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining, that passes 700. Comments from the, um, press, comments from the public?
Ben Niles, Levin, Fernwood Drive in Merrimack. Relative to the PFOA fact sheet.
Yep.
It's nice to put things on town website, but people don't know it's there and don't go there every day. And what's suggested I would have is, there is the, um, Merrimack patch that I have my phone and iPad, and I get alerts when something new is coming out, okay? And it could be on a real estate listing, it could be on a, uh, police arrest, which just came out, uh, this evening. And what I would suggest is see if the link to the town website can be handed over to the patch, and everyone that receives the patch notifications receives it, and they can decide, oh yeah, I'm interested, I'm gonna go there and go find it. Increase the awareness of it.
Paul? Don't mean to interrupt you, Mr.
No.
If people want to, they can sign up for news alerts, and they can get those news alerts like you can get from the patch, directly from the town website. Whenever we put anything up on the town website underneath news, if you sign up for it, you can get it, just like people have signed up for agendas, and we mail out the agendas, they get all the agendas automatically. And we have that capability on our website right now. So anybody who's interested in signing up for, for news, the news links through that to town when they put it out on the website, anything new on the news links that go out, they can sign up for that, and we have the ability to, as soon as it does, it sends out a message to everybody. That's something that is, is a feature that we have had. We have not done a good job of letting people know.
Yeah, that's, that was-
And that's why, that's why I'm bringing that up.
Okay, but somehow we need to inform all of our residents.
Yes, and that's, we will, we will hopefully shortly have a Facebook page as well that we can announce as well.
And when we do the series?
That will be-
We should maybe highlight that during each one.
Do a series on our, on our website and how to best access it and utilize it.
Right.
Thank you, Ben, that's a really good suggestion.
Yeah. I still like the patch. I don't do social media, I don't trust Google. Okay? I don't want my data collected and sold, and then at some point down the road maybe used against me. So, um, but I'll go to the town website and sign up for the notifications or alerts.
Yep, and if, if you're having trouble, just call 424-2331. Anybody who answers the phone will be able to walk anybody through setting them up.
Okay. And the other thing is kind of related to the MS4, is as they're talking about protecting the town water and the impact of runoff contaminations, I, I think there's a way we can educate our public. So for instance, people have their lawns fertilized. Well, there's chemical fertilization, there's just that, it's a mix of chemicals, and there is organic fertilization, which is much less harmless. I hire a service and I tell them I want organic. And it's, it's the little pellets, it's not the, you know, true green spray everywhere type thing. And I think that, you know, at some point, we need to let our residents know there's ways you can improve things in town, like our water supply and the quality of the discharge, et cetera, on it. Uh, another thing is, uh, herbicides. And they're highly contaminating. And once you have your lawn under control, okay? There's so few dandelions, I dig them out with a pocket knife as I mow my lawn and going along. Same with other weeds that pop up here and there, because I have it under control. So the key is, once you have it under control, you don't need herbicides. Because there's so few of them, you just pluck them as you go. And I think that, you know, we, with, with everything about water quality, we need to do more to encourage people to get to a place where they don't need as many dangerous chemicals, if at all, on it. And my third comment is about the transfer station. And I'm not sure, I know that we used to make money on the recyclables, and now it's a net cost, I think, was the last thing I read. But what I don't know is, what is more costly, the recyclable or the dump location in Pembroke or wherever? Because I've recycled ever since the, the recycle center opened, and I still do. And I find that when I recycle, it reduces my, uh, trash at the landfill by a third to a half on it. And, and that could be, again, a positive move. If it is, we need to encourage that more. Because if it's not, then why are we even recycling to begin with? Just, you know, putting it in a landfill, but of course, that's not the right answer, because recycling, you reduce the mass. Because eventually, we're gonna run out of landfills everywhere in, you know, the populated parts of the country. And they'll turn dormant farms in Iowa or Nebraska into giant landfills. But, but that's a thought too. And, um, um, it's amazing how even well-educated residents in this community, and I have one fishing buddy, they don't recycle, they never have, you know? And I thought it's always a no-brainer. So, um, again, this is something that has to do with communicating with the residents, that, you know, they have, uh, a stake in the game, and there's ways to improve the environment, improve our water quality, and they can individually contribute to that improvement.
You're, you're absolutely right, Ben, and thank you for bringing that up again. A big portion of that MS4 presentation talked about one of those, um, control modules which involves education of the public. And, um, the two people you saw there are responsible for trying to drive those kind of things across all six of those different- And, um, the two people you saw there are responsible for trying to drive those kind of things across all six of those different pieces. And so it's, it becomes a huge job to try and manage the MS four educational piece as well as checking for illicit discharges and checking all of the, the, the catch basins and, you know. So there's, there's a lot of work to do. They're doing a fair amount and they've managed to, to convince EPA that they're doing an adequate job of, of public education. You and I might not believe that that's adequate, but at least it meets the minimum requirements that EPA is, is doing, is putting forth. And so any efforts that we can continue to do, any ideas that people have or they're willing to help drive, um, are all to the good. And, um, so I, I'm not going to ignore you, but I'm not going to run out and try and spearhead that program because I'm busy right now too. So, um, I, but I agree that all those things are, are very good points.
By pushing out to, you know.
Can you come back to the mic if you want to respond again? Thanks.
By pushing things out, alerts, notifications on patch with a link, uh, or trying to get more people to sign up for notifications at the website. You know, I know it's a long road to hoe, but you got to start somewhere to, in, in the road to get down to the end of the road.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Seeing nobody else, comments from the council? Nancy?
Thank you. I just wanted to again reiterate what you said earlier. I'd thank everybody that came to the hot dogs for Alzheimer's Day. I think the total was around twenty-three hundred, uh, hot dogs sold today. So it far exceeded the expectations. I think it was fifteen hundred last year. So that was great. And there were so many people that were kind and came and made donations and our police department, fire department, town hall, M V D, um, uh, it was just, everybody at the court. Um, we just, we had a hot dog eating contest over there and, and, um, it wa, it was great. So thank you to everybody that, that volunteered and supported, um, including all of you. So, thank you.
And I, I think beyond just selling hot dogs, the fact that they got as much in donations, it will probably come out as a really huge impact. Because I was playing cashier for a bit and taking
Yeah.
a, a lot of twenties and, and fifties and whatnot from people that were saying, here, just keep the rest. And we, we intentionally would give them the change back and ask them to put it in the donation can. So that when they could feel like they're making a true donation and we could keep the records separate from what the hot dog expenses were versus the donation. So I think it was a very successful event.
And many people shared that, the, the impact in their own families and they said, both my parents had it. And so the numbers were, were huge. And, um, Bob Bergen sent swag for everybody. I said, I'll bring it back, so I will hand them out, yeah, unsharpened.
Okay, thanks. Anybody else have any comments? So I'd just like to wish everybody a happy Fourth of July. Um, it's coming up soon. Seems like a lot faster than I anticipated. We've about blown through June. Um, but anyway, the weather's been great and today was certainly wonderful. And I'm looking forward to the Fourth of July fireworks and the parade. And, um, I don't know if anybody else is going to join in with us, but I'm hoping to be one of the people, uh, supporting, supporting the balloons, yeah, so.
If you council or sign up to walk with the balloon, you get a free T-shirt.
You could change your plans. Holding a balloon. These are big balloons that have eight ropes each. These are not just simple balloons. So, anyway. Okay, if there's no other business.
Can I make a motion? We adjourn.
Motion to adjourn by Lon Woods, seconded by Andy. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed or abstaining? That passes seven zero zero. We abstain. Thank you and good night.
Nine oh four?
All right, nine oh four.